For Tuesday, May 5th, 2015. Councilor Levine would you lead us on the smoots and flaggings?
I'd be honored to, Mr. President.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It is the republic of which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Clerk, if you call the roll, please.
Yes, President Hey.
Here.
Counselor Levine.
President.
Counselor Boishman.
Present.
Counselor Beesaw.
Present.
Counselor Clark.
Here.
Counselor DiNatali.
Here.
Counselor Green.
Here.
Counselor Joseph.
Counselor Caddy.
Here.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
Present.
Counselor Tran.
We will now have the public forum. Anybody wishing to speak on any matter on the agenda may do so for not more than two minutes. If you're addressing the public here in the petition, you have an opportunity to speak at that time.
Please line up.
Please approach the table and identify yourself by name and address for the record and the item number on the agenda you are addressing. Does anyone wish to speak? Bearing that, we move to the report of committee on records. Counselor Green.
Yes, I'm happy to report. The minutes from the last meeting are in order.
Will the committee on records report be accepted?
Second. Motion second that we accept the committee on records' report. Someone want to speak to the motion?
No.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Appointments committee, Counselor Levine.
Mr. President, the appointments committee met tonight. We had one new appointment before us that is a member of the Pittsburgh Housing Authority, Mark Jackson. Term expires January 1st, 2017. Mr. Jackson's appointment was unanimous by the committee.
Move the appointments committee report be accepted.
Second. Motion second that the appointments committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Communications from her honor, the mayor. Dear honorable counselors, I hereby appoint and ask for your confirmation of following individuals as permanent firefighters. Matthew S. Lenny, 12 Capone Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Jeffrey K. Boudreau, 12 Vine Street, Pittsburgh, Mass. Sincerely, Mr. Beesaw. Other communications counselor, the only thing we have is the pension reserve investment management board.
Move the place to unfile in the city clerk's office.
Second. Motion second to place it on file in clerk's office. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Moving forward to the agenda. Oh eighty-four fifteen, annual report Pittsburgh redevelopment authority, 2014.
Mr. President. I'd move that the Pittsburgh redevelopment authority in report be sent to a council hold meeting. I think it's about time we heard from the redevelopment authority of what's happening in the city now that we've recently hired on an economic development director. I'd personally like to know what redevelopment authority is doing and hopefully we can coordinate the two efforts together.
Second. Motion second that oh eighty-four fifteen, the annual report of the Pittsburgh redevelopment authority be sent to a council hold committee meeting. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? They'll be done. Reports of committees. Finance committee, Counselor DiNatali.
Mr. President, finance met last Tuesday and took up the following. Eighty-one dash fifteen, in order that the city of Pittsburgh accepts the gift of up to $250,000 from Unitil Pittsburgh Gas and Electric Light Company and allow the expenditure of funds from the gift for the reconstruction of various city streets. That was adopted unanimously. Eighty-two fifteen, transfer $28,000 to DPW streetlights from accounts as follows, $7,000 from DPW highway general expenses, and $21,000 from DPW municipal garage expenses. That was adopted unanimously. And then thirty-five fifteen, order transfer $42,500 to information technology expenses from reserve for other municipal purposes. That was adopted four to one, and we also had a discussion overview with finance, the finance team, on the status of city revenue and expense accounts for fiscal year 2015.
Move the finance committee report be accepted.
Second.
Speaking to the motion, Counselor Levine.
On oh thirty-five fifteen, I think it's about time the city puts an effort into the websites. This is the website one, am I correct?
Yes.
My only concern is that now we have, I just saw in the paper, is that the civic days is having a website, we have Pittsburgh Rocks. I just hope we can all come into to one location so we're not diminishing ourselves as a city by having people go all over the place. I hope we can find ourselves in one location and have all the services brought out there. Like a redevelopment authority is not part of ours or they can't find it easy, but I just hope this is an effort to move towards that direction.
Thank you.
I'd like to ask that thirty-five fifteen be separate?
We can take a separate vote?
Yes.
I'd also like to speak to the motion. Last week, as a member of the finance committee, I voted to adopt oh thirty-five fifteen because I felt that regardless of what I thought of the webpage as it currently exists and the problems and the problems that I believe we have because of lack of management from the corner office down in regards to who's responsible for what parts and making sure that everything gets done. I voted for it because I was concerned that we have a new economic development person coming on board, and I thought that they needed this as a tool and we had an obligation to make sure that we put all the tools in that person's toolbox to help them to succeed. I am going to vote for it again tonight, but I did receive a thought from somebody that maybe the money would have been better spent if we gave the money to the economic development department and allowed them to develop their own webpage. But we're at this point and I will support it. I'm going to ask for a motion on eighty-one fifteen and eighty-two fifteen.
Oh eighty-one and oh eighty-two fifteen be adopted.
Second. Motion is second that oh eighty-one and oh eighty-two fifteen from the finance committee report be adopted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Move oh thirty-five fifteen be adopted.
Second. Motion is second to adopt oh thirty-five fifteen. Speaking to the motion, Counselor DiNatali.
Mr. President, last Tuesday night's finance meeting and meetings prior to that, there have been counselors in this room who have said several times over that the website is not adequately managed. I think it was Counselor Joseph who mentioned when this first came up, and rightfully so, he mentioned that it's garbage in, garbage out. Everyone has a consensus here that the website's not managed right. Everyone has a consensus here that there is no clear policy or procedure as to who is responsible for what. The issues we have encountered are broken links, links that don't work, links that are missing, information that's not there. It is not the system. No one in this room can definitively state that it's the system that is causing this city to have a bad website. You said it yourself, it's management. Whether it be the mayor or IT, broken links and incorrect information on a website has nothing to do with what the server is. Yet, this is an opportune time to spend almost $50,000 to fix a system that in our opinions is probably not the reason why the website looks the way it does. So before I support $42,000 to build a new website, where is the guarantee, and none of us have a guarantee, that this new website's going to be adequately maintained and monitored? No one in this room can say it's going to be. So why are we going to invest this amount of money to fix a website? Here's the reason why people have said we're going to do this, because we've hired an economic development director. So the premise therefore is if we do not do this, we are stifling economic development progress, which I outright reject. This problem has been in the works for 10 years, and it took 10 years to finally have something done about it, and my suspicion is it's only being done now because we've hired someone new. If there were proper management and proper oversight, maybe we wouldn't need to spend this money. It's not as if the website cannot be used in its current format because of upgrades that are required. That's different. We are doing this because we're trying to fix a problem that has nothing to do with the system, has everything to do with management. So I will not support this because even if we put lipstick on a pig, which is what this is doing, it's still going to be a pig. Website will still not be updated regularly, it won't be monitored, we will still see issues with it, so it looks nicer. Big deal. So I for one am a little bit stunned that we're going to vote for this when everybody in the room knows the real problem and we're just going to throw money at it and it's not going to fix the problem. We got a procedure and policy document from the mayor a few weeks ago. There were questions about that procedure. Thank you, Mr. President, raised some good questions. We never got any clarification on it. So we're just going to vote for this now? I hope I'm wrong, but I feel that too often votes taken in this room are based on personal feelings and not on factual evidence. There is no factual evidence to sustain why we should spend this amount of money. Thank you.
Counselor Green.
Is there a reason that we either can or cannot hold this until after we get the IT department in front of us for budget hearings and be able to ask, you know, the question, is $42,500 going to fix whatever the issues that we've been bringing up for 10 years? Not me personally, but the council's been bringing up. Or is it, you know, what is the $42,500 going to do for us to get our website from where it is to where we all think that it should be? Thank you.
Counselor Kuschmerich.
When the information about the website was sent to us and I had an opportunity to review other like cities and sister cities and peer institutions that used websites similar to this, it was not only a beautiful product, but you could tell it was instantly easier to navigate for the end user. So our residents would be visiting the website, prospective businesses would be looking to come to the city. It was a beautiful product. You look at $42,500, which seems like a lot and it is, but for a product of that caliber, that's a small amount. I kept waiting for, where is the catch in the price? Because I've seen other similar sized institutions and the money they spend on websites, and it's exponentially higher than this, both in the private and the public sector. So certainly, I think the product that we're getting is an excellent one and a superior one to what we have. Currently, we have a website that is out of date. It's becoming increasingly difficult to manage on the back end of things from the code is obsolete, it doesn't have an ability to track the broken links. Now, I'm not giving excuses. We have, Counselor DiNatali is correct, we have numerous problems with the procedures that govern our website, but it doesn't mean that the website isn't also a problem. We have a terrible product in this city right now and we don't have inadequate procedures. At some point, we have to address them. You have to address one of those two before you can address the others. So I think this is a perfect opportunity, invest in the website, show that there's a product that's worth putting adequate time into to address the procedures. We have numerous departments in this city that use a website adequately. Our city clerk's office does a great job with our website. Our DPW does a great job with the information is readily available to the public, but there's only so many ways you can make that website look attractive, make it dynamic, make it interactive. The only other way to do that and accomplish that is through another website. While I agree that we have departments that don't do a great job and they neglect their website, I'm sure some of it is from terrible procedures, terrible practices, and lack of supervision and accountability. The other half may be because the difficulty to actually address it and reformat and redesign the page. So I think, yes, I think we all agree that the procedures need to be updated and there needs to be accountability, but we also need a new website. We've been asking for it for, you know, as a body for more than five years now. It was outdated the day we got it. It's time we actually invest in this, and absolutely, I hope we can continue to, I hope that we can begin to hold department heads accountable when the website isn't up to standard. Thank you.
Counselor DiNatali.
With all due respect, the amount of money that this is requiring is not the reason why I think we should not support it. I'm saying we shouldn't support it because only this year have we been told that the website is quote unquote "out of date." Convenient excuse for problems that have been persistent for 10 years. All departments that come before us, what do they usually tell this council if something's not working? I need more people or I need more money. There's never any internal look inside the box thinking, it's just, give me more money. There is no reason to do this. Maybe the website is not beautiful looking, but it's, when you ask a department head to update a section of the website, it gets done. And I click on the link and it works. What more do we need? We need a functioning website. We don't need a beautiful website that doesn't function. So again, everyone wants to look away from the fact that everybody in charge of what's going on, it's going to continue even though the website might look better on our eyes. What does it matter what it looks like if it's not going to work? Oh, so the website's going to read the links being broken? Okay, but who's going to monitor getting updated? Who's going to monitor what content goes on there? No system can monitor that. We're having this discussion tonight, ladies and gentlemen, because there has been a failure of management for decades, for years, to fix something, and the convenient excuse is it's out of code. I don't accept that at all. Until they get their act together and figure out and fix the way that thing is managed, then you can come to me for a capital investment to upgrade the system. But until the underpinnings are set in place, it's just like a chair or a table. If the legs are wobbly, but you want to put a new top on it, it's still not going to stand up. It's going to fall. So do we need a better looking website? Of course we do, but that's not why we're here. We're here because for years, all of us have been saying the same thing and it's been ignored. So obviously, when Counselor Kuschmerich talks about the need, this is long overdue. His frustration is shared by me and everybody else because he, like I, have been asking for this for a long time. And now that we're getting it, the reason we're getting it is not because of the complaints we've had, it's because the system's bad. Sorry, ladies and gentlemen, again, I hope I'm wrong, but no one in this room can tell me with any definitiveness that this is going to be maintained properly, but we're going to do this anyway. I don't get it. Contractors, people who want to do business in the city, they want to go to a website, they want to click on a link and see the information. They don't care if it's red color or nice looking on it, they want the information because right now when they click on it, they get old outdated information or no information at all. No system is going to fix that. Thank you.
Counselor Boishman.
I was talking to the ID department and a couple of times you said in front of us and you told us, I'll take full responsibility for all the information going on to this new website. And if you recall right, I asked them numerous times, why would you want to take that responsibility? And you can't even handle what they have because they don't have enough manpower. And I want to make sure if I vote for $42,500 that the information gets put in there. I don't want to waste my money or the taxpayers' money for the information not being put in. I want to know who's going to be putting the information on there. Just because the DPW does it, what about the other people? Are they going to be putting on their website still? I'm not going to vote for this tonight. I'll go along with Andy's recommendation.
Counselor Beesaw.
Thank you, Counselor. There is definitely a difference between a website that's been around for a long time, similar to, if you had a computer that's 10 years old, absolutely that computer would work, but would it download the data that's coming across now? It may, but at a slower rate. This here is a website that not only is a newer website, but from what I gather, they'll actually be able to be upgraded. The present website we have, we can't get upgrades to it, it's not supported. Anything that we do here, we can't control City Hall, we can't control the way City Hall is being run, okay? But with something like this, this is something that, whether it's this mayor or a new mayor coming in, this is something that at least the city would be able to update year after year and actually get it functioning to the point where it looks professional, okay? I have to disagree that there aren't companies out there that don't look for professional websites, okay? You have people from all over the United States that may be looking at Pittsburgh. If they look at a website that is 15, 20 years old, they might feel that that's the way that the city does business. We have a new economic development person, we have to look professional, we have to look sharp. One of the things that Counselor Bean pointed out about having all these different Facebooks and all these, hopefully with the new website, it'll have the capability of taking all of these different websites and condensing them onto one. So since I got on the council, I've been looking for a new website, looking for different ways. Some of the quotes I've gotten from websites was it was going to cost us almost $100,000 to get a new website. So I will definitely be supporting this and, but I will be keeping an eye on how it is managed, and if it's not managed correctly, I will make known at that time. Thank you.
I'd like to follow up on your last statement, Counselor Beesaw. Counselor DiNatali has concerns because of the current system and how it's managed and who's responsible and what, and he did bring up that we got a thing from the mayor a couple of weeks ago that didn't answer my questions and didn't make it clear to me as to who has authority and who is responsible. But the IT director has stated that if we get this, the webpage will be up, it'll be running and functioning and it will be much better. So while Counselor DiNatali isn't going to vote for it because he doesn't believe that that's the problem, that it's the management and the policies and procedures, I'm willing because of the new economic development director to vote for this. And I can certainly tell you that I'm going to be paying attention, and if this webpage doesn't work, I don't want to hear that it's a webpage. Thank you. Counselor Bean.
There are also some other add-ons to just on the website that I've heard too is that hopefully under this new website, there'll be more online permitting, more online access to licenses and that also. So for a lot of folks that can't come to City Hall, don't know where City Hall is anymore, some still go to Main Street, but it's, you know, it's on Boulder Drive, by the way. But a lot of folks don't have the time to do that, so a lot of this online permitting and licensing now can be done online under this new module. So that was a key point for me. And I also asked about streaming of video of council meetings and other important events, and hopefully under this new website, we'll be able to do things like that. But I guess it gives us other abilities, which someone has to manage that we don't have today, but, I mean, I'm on websites for cities all day long, all the time. My job basically is working with cities, and cities are way ahead of us if you look at other cities. And they have their total budgets on, they have their compensation packages on, they have everything, every information that you can imagine on their websites compared to what we have now where you really can't find much. But it's a step in the right direction. I just hope we can get this going sooner than later.
Counselor Joseph.
Our current website has two problems. It has content problems and it has functionality problems. We cannot fix the functionality problems. It's just the problems that exist are beyond our ability to fix because the company that built it went out of business, okay? So that problem, we have no control over. Content, we have control over, but we need to get functionality back into the website so that we can have a functioning website and then we can enforce it. I've looked at the Westford site where they, one of the examples that this company built, full functionality, it's got, you know, all the bells and whistles, and if you look at it, it's got huge content, okay? So somebody's going to have to be responsible for making sure that that content is there, okay? But functionality is something that we're getting for $42,000, and we need functionality in order to get the website up and running and working properly, and then we can address if there's a content issue. But we need to get this thing moving forward so that we can get a functioning website. It's all I've heard for the last five years is that our website doesn't function. Here's our ability to upgrade it and get a new website. Let's move forward.
Counselor Boishman.
I want to move forward, but I want to know who's going to put the information in. It's like me owning a store and I ran out of penny nails, and I got employees, but they don't want to put the time card in to say, oh, there's some penny nails. Who's going to put the information in? I can't expect the IT department to put it in. They get too much work, they can't even handle what they have, and we cut back. I'm only going by what they told me. So who's going to put the information in? That's what I want to know. If you tell me who puts the information in, I'll vote for it. If you're going to tell me, oh, I guess Counselor Caddy will put the information in today and Counselor Green will put it in tomorrow and Counselor DiNatali will put it in next week, and all of a sudden we go to the website and we got a fancy page with no information. What good is it? $42,500, and I can tell my next door neighbor, we did a good job there, anyway. Sorry.
Counselor DiNatali.
I too want to move forward, and unfortunately, I don't want to be labeled as someone who doesn't want to move forward with this. If the problem with our website was functionality, which someone just said is the problem when it isn't, functionality has nothing to do with someone updating content and fixing links. That's an operational problem. I try to put this into the context of why we're even discussing this right now. We're discussing this right now because we have all stated publicly several times, the website is managed poorly. Why would I support money to fix a system that does not have the underpinnings set in place? I am not against upgrading the website. I want some assurances or I want a trial period to see how this website is being managed before we then invest in a new one. I don't think that's too much for us to ask. We're not trying to stop progress here. We're trying to ensure that our investment is well worth the investment, because if the investment is made and it's not done the way it's supposed to, what is the point of the investment? So I agree, the person, the company runs it, is no longer in business, fine. But when I look at asking a department head to update something or the IT manager to fix something, it gets fixed. No one has ever wrote back to me and said, well, because the website's old and outdated, I can't fix it. If that were the case, then yeah, the warning signs would be ringing off the hook. I can't update a link, Counsel, because the system is broken. I have never gotten that excuse. This is an excuse conveniently timed because a lot of these counselors here have said to the mayor, if you don't fix the website, I'm not voting for the budget. So surprise, surprise, we're getting a request to fix the website, but no one here is confident in how it's going to be managed. Why is the management part of it and the system always separated? We all sit here and say we can't fix how it's managed. True, but we have to understand why this is coming before us. It's because management has failed, and it will continue to fail. It will continue to fail. This will not fix the problems we have all experienced because none of us have ever gotten the excuse, the system is causing me to not be able to fix it. It's just a convenient excuse to get a new website and hide all the problems, and those problems will continue. So by not voting for this, you're not saying to the economic development director or to the customers of the city that we don't think it's worth the investment. We're simply demanding on behalf of the people who are paying the bill for this, that the product we invest in is managed properly. That is not an obscene request to make. And I don't have any confidence in IT or the mayor saying to us, it's not management, because that makes them liable. So of course they're going to say it's because the capital investment's missing. It's the same song and dance and we're just going to throw money against the wall and hope it works until we find out what the crux of the problem is in updating the website. Once that is done, spend $60,000 on a new website, I don't care, but until that's fixed, we shouldn't be putting any money into this. And again, no one here is even comfortable that it's going to be managed properly. So we're going to give a new website and do one of these. Well, I hope it works. I don't get it. Thank you.
We have a motion to second to adopt oh thirty-five fifteen. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed?
Aye.
Opposition? To an opposition. Moving forward, Public Works Committee.
Mr. President, Public Works Committee met Tuesday, April 28th. First petition was zero twenty-nine fourteen, Counselor Joel Caddy to construct a rotary roundabout at the corner of Electric and Rollstone using funds acquired by the Benz Corp. and using our DPW for construction. During the discussion, Commissioner Laxall stated that the engineering division will schedule a survey of this intersection this season. Committee voted three to zero to hold. Petition thirty-two, two thirty-two fourteen, Counselor Jody Joseph and residents of Good Fellow Drive to accept Good Fellow Drive as a public way. During the discussion, Commissioner Laxall stated that he issued a letter to the planning board per the committee's request from a prior meeting recommending that they revoke developers' bond. Developers attorney is aware of this. To date, the paving work has not been completed. Committee voted three to zero to hold. Petition two forty-five fourteen, Counselor Joel Caddy and various city residents to make Main Street a one lane street with a bike lane on the left, angled parking on the right, from Boston to the old City Hall, including parking at Monument Park for the library only, also raise crosswalks pedestrians. Discussion, Counselor Caddy noted that Pittsburgh State University is funding a traffic study which will determine the effects of a single lane on traffic on Main Street. Committee voted three zero to hold. Petition two ninety-three fourteen, Counselor Mike Kuschmerich to repair Petition 29314, Council Mike Krishmerick to repair a section of sidewalk on Marshall Street from Johnson Street to Simon Street, subject to funding from CDG program. Council Caddy noted that there were numerous driveways that crossed the sidewalk, so this needs to be considered when the sidewalk is reconstructed. In addition, he requested that the DPW look at the driveway that was constructed on Phil at the corner of Marshall and Simon Street. There is no retaining wall, so the fill was washing down Simon Street onto the sidewalk. The committee discussed funding of the project, which is estimated to cost $31,000, and requested that Commissioner Laxo file a CDGV application in January. The committee voted three to zero to grant the petition, as amended by adding the phrase "subject to funding from CDGV program." Petition 02715, Council Dean Tran to remedy the drain issue between 86 and 100 Tibbetts Circle. It was stated at February 15th meeting that there is ponding on the street, requiring that a 300-foot-long section of the road be repaved and the elevations of 12 structures be adjusted so the drainage works properly. Superintendent Withington noted that this is a safety problem, especially when the water on the pavement freezes over. Commissioner Laxo stated that the funding of the project would be $30,500, would have to come from Chapter 90. The committee voted three to zero to grant the petition. Petition 5315, Council Marcus Dizal to inspect and provide revenue for prevention of water runoff from the side of the street onto Belmont Street. Dangerous conditions are being created during the winter months, causing significant -- excuse me, I missed, lost my place. One second.
Move the committee's report be accepted.
I'm not done yet. Dangerous are being created during the winter months, causing significant ice buildup in front of the property. It was stated at the March 15th meeting that runoff flows across the width of the street, and this created hazard conditions in the winter months. The repair would involve recreating and paving Belmont Street from St. Paul to Romano Havitt, the cost of $35,000, using Chapter 90 funds. Council Caddy noted that many people use Belmont Street as a shortcut, so this should be considered when petitions are prioritized. The committee voted three to zero to grant the petition, as amended.
Move the public committee report be adopted.
Second.
Motion, the second, the Public Works Committee report be accepted. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Orders, Finance, 08515.
Move 08515 up to and including 09015, be sent to Finance.
Second. Motion, the second, that 08515 up to and including 09015, be referred to the Finance Committee. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. Orders, 09115, ordinance be obtained by the City Council of the City of Pittsburgh as follows, that Chapter 3, Section 143 of the Code of City of Pittsburgh entitled qualifications be amended by deleting same in its entirety and by inserting in place thereof the following language, the members of the council in aging shall be of lawful age and be citizens of the United States. At least nine members shall be residents of Pittsburgh, and up to three members may be residents of other communities who are substantially involved within the Pittsburgh senior community or are employed within the boundaries of the City of Pittsburgh. Refer to petition 27014, first reading.
Motion, the second, that 09115 be sent to its first reading.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
Petitions. Move 9215, skipping over 9315, and 9415 to 9615 be sent to their respective committees. Second.
Second. Move, the second, that 09215, 9415, 9515, and 9615 be sent to their respective committees. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous. 09315, Councilors Bean, Dizal, Joseph, Caddy, Green, Tran, to request the mayor to restore funds recently transferred out of OPEB for the demolition of the West Pittsburgh steam plant as outlined in the petition.
Make a motion to send it to the mayor.
Second. We have a motion, the second, that 09315 be sent to the mayor. Speaking to the motion, Council Bean.
Thank you, Mr. President. The reason I asked my colleagues to join me in signing this petition is that, two weeks ago at the meeting, it came before us to put the money for the demolition of this steam plant. It was noted by the business manager, Larry Casassa, that if we didn't approve it that night, May 1st is coming right on the corner, and that the contractor would only hold that bid number for that day. And I believe there's a $200,000 difference between his bid and the next bid down. So, my concern, I think the concern of my colleagues, was that if we had not, if we postponed the vote and asked mayor to come back with a different funding source, that it could have jeopardized that demolition grant, also the grant that came with it, the demolition and the grant that came with it. So, it's my hope that the mayor does the right thing now, and now that we have the time, is restore the money to the OPEB account where we originally had put it, the reason to, not to kick the can down the road, as Council Dean Tally said. So, my hope is that the mayor would now take the opportunity before the end of the fiscal year to transfer money back into the OPEB account. I know that we can't force her to do it, but I think support from the council and action of it would help encourage her to do the right thing.
At that meeting, I voted in opposition to 09315 for a couple of reasons. One is I get weary from the, hi, this has to happen tonight, or we're going to lose things that come from departments before us on a regular basis. It's just tiring that people can't get their ducks in order in a timely manner and bring them before us so that we're not feeling like we're held hostage to a grant or to a deadline. But my more important reason for voting in opposition to it was that I am opposed to the fact that the mayor took the money out of OPEB. I would have much preferred for the mayor to take the money from other accounts. I would have even preferred it to be taken out of the stabilization account. I think that's one of the types of things that stabilization account is there for. And as much as I've been an advocate for the stabilization account and worked diligently to get mayors to put money into it, I would have preferred it to come from there. Taking the money out of the OPEB was inappropriate. I asked the mayor that night, we have $575,000 in OPEB right now. If this passes, we're down to 275. And I asked the mayor, what was in the line item for OPEB for next year's budget? And what I got was zero. Squat. Nada. That caused me to vote against it. So, well, I believe that this petition, in my opinion, would have been better served to be in a resolution form because it's simply the council asking the mayor to do something that we have no authority in regards to. I think you're, you know, salmon swimming upstream. The mayor made her decision, the mayor took the money from what she wanted to, and she's obviously showed us by having a zero in that budget for next year's line item that OPEB isn't as serious an issue to her as it is to me. Council Dean Tally.
Two weeks ago, I brought up the fact that the only area to take money out of this was OPEB. That's what the mayor's call was. I mentioned health insurance. I find it humorous to see 08715 that we referred to Finance. Surprise, surprise, we're moving $90,000 out of health insurance. There's a lot more to move out of that account, but 90 is what she's doing right now. But the point is, is that, I mean, I'm not saying this to get my jollies. It's in the numbers. That health insurance account is a slush fund. There's going to be more transfers out of that account, I can guarantee it. I just find it humorous how that's the first one we're going to take money out of this year. Because last year and the year before that, and the year before that, everyone during budget sessions, they were saying, don't touch health insurance. Oh, my God, we're not going to have health insurance if you touch it. So, interesting. Number two, the mayor said in the paper that, to you, Mr. President, to your point, what's the big deal? I'm paraphrasing. 275 is still in there, and all we need to put in there is about 275 a year. Says who? Has anybody, has anybody been told that? What imaginary third party did, said that we have to put 275 in there a year?
That was a recommendation, 250 a year from the state or from somebody.
Did?
State treasurer. As a minimum.
Was it state treasurer's office?
As a minimum.
As a minimum?
Yep.
Were we communicated that when we were talking OPEB for the last four years? That was news to me.
That's just come up recently.
Okay. But that was news to me. We, the point here is, is that the mayor knows what was done is not the right way to do it. But to cover her track, she's going to use this magical, all of a sudden, come-to-God moment that we only need to put 250 a year in. Okay, so, we're going to do the bare minimum? We have 575. Why don't we put 575 in there? We owe $180 million. I mean, I think that the scary part is, everyone in this city, even before my time, and there's legitimate concern for this, because I wasn't on the council during previous administrations, but I knew they liked to spend like drunken sailors, that if we touch stabilization, oh, my God, our bond rating's going to go to heck. No, stabilization is there to be used for things like this. Okay? It's not to be used for contracts, it's not to be used for operating expenses, it's to be used for one-time expenses like this. So, I feel like there is this mentality in the finance team and the mayor that if we touch that money, we're going backwards. So, I appreciate the petition. I wish we did this sooner. I honestly have no faith at all in the mayor listening to this petition, Council Bean, none at all. You know why? Because in the FY '16 proposal, there is no money set aside for OPEB. Even though the mayor, and I have it on tape, said last year she will make a commitment to doing that every year, she did not. And then we had to read in the paper how this budget coming up is the best budget we've ever had, without telling the public why it's the best budget we've ever had. It's because we're taking more money out of their pocket. And the $600,000 coming from Great Wolf, what did this council petition the mayor to do several months ago? We said, any excess revenue over the projected total from Great Wolf be put into OPEB. The mayor said, thank you very much, I'm not doing it. Because what is she doing with that extra revenue? She's spending it. That is such a big no-no because if we don't have that 600K next year, where are the cuts going to come from? So, I appreciate the councilors, you know, seeing this viewpoint in the way it should be, but I have no confidence this is going to change her mind. Because all the other petitions we've sent to her to do things, she hasn't listened to us, yet I have to hear from her every year how we don't give her suggestions. She said that in the paper, too. We don't give her suggestions. She gives us two months in advance to give her suggestions, but she rarely gets, ever gets any of suggestions. Well, that's not true because I give plenty of suggestions. I know because I'm reminded of it every year. So, I wish I could sign on to this with the caveat saying, you know, I'll believe it when I see it. Sorry. Thank you.
Council Caddy.
When, I'm a little closer to this issue because it's in my ward, and I was speaking to Mr. Casassa about this for months. And I don't know if everybody remembers this, but we had a major oil leak up there that went into the Nashua River. And there was, I don't know the things they put in, the name of the things they put in the water, but those had to be changed this year at the cost of $32,000. And if we don't take that building down, that could continue. And if there was ever a major leak of the oil, we'd be in awful lot of trouble with the DDP. Secondly, when they were going to get estimates to tear the building down, the second option of this was to take down the 300-foot stack and also two breaking concrete tanks. Well, the lowest bidder came in, and it was affordable to do the stacks and these tanks. When the mayor was going to take the money from OPEB, I was aware of it weeks ago, and I had a conversation with Mr. Casassa that we're going to have trouble with it. We're going to have trouble with it. So, the night we voted on this, I was considering all those things that were going on. And I didn't like the position we were in, and I know, I know it was going to cause problems, and it did. But I'm guessing there's a way that we can get the mayor to put the money back in there. And if she doesn't listen to us, we got plenty of time between now and the budget to find $300,000 in that budget to put it back in there. And we've done it before, and I think that, you know, we're not the mayor, we're the city council, and the mayor's, you know, doing what she thinks is right. In this instance, I think she was wrong taking it out of there. And I think that we should do everything we can within our power to make it right.
We have a motion, the second, to send 09315 to the mayor. All those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? It is unanimous.
adjourned.
Second. Motion, the second, to adjourn. Council Joseph.
I just wanted to thank everybody that came out for the Ward 6 cleanup. We did a lot of participation, a lot of TVs that day, a lot of areas inside Ward 6 and outside of Ward 6 that were cleaned up that day. So, I want to thank everybody that came out. It was a good day for it, and there was a lot of people that came out. So, thank you very much.
Council Green.
Yes, I would like to remind the public that Ward 1 cleanup is this Saturday. It's a different venue this year. We're meeting at the old Rollstone Street School, which is at the corner of Rollstone and Laurel Street. And our ward cleanup is from 8 to noon.
Council motion.
I, too, would like to thank the people that came out in Ward 2A and 2B, and Ward 3 to Joel Caddy, Council Caddy. But I also got a gripe. I think, as I was cleaning, we picked up a lot of bulk items. This wasn't trash from this hush, ruined stuff. This is bulk items. Couches, TVs, mattresses. Unbelievable. Council Joseph, you had a ward cleanup April 25th. You cleaned up Airport Road, less than seven days, less than seven days. There's a couch on Airport Road. A couch on Airport Road. Then the other problem I'm having, and we have to start licking it, hypodermic needles. This trill about. You know, everybody says, Paul, you've got to be sensitive, you've got to be politically correct. We've got to help these people in need that need these, that are doing this stuff. But yet, they discard the needles anywhere across the city. I had to pick up a couple of them, and if I didn't know they were there, and I had a rake, and I went down, I would have got stabbed. And the other thing, when we're having a side yard sale, or we're having an auction on vacant property, once you're the house, and they get tore down, and we're selling the property, we should make sure that in that property, we have stipulations saying, you will maintain that property and not let it overgrow. This is unbelievable. It's unreal. Come back up and collect on and see, we haven't even touched part of it. Vaking yards with couches and TVs, and people discarding them. Something's not working, and we've got to change the system because we can't keep on sending the DPW. They sent two guys out today to pick out a couch, a big TV and something, and it cost them $300 to $400. Now, you lost two guys from productivity on our city streets because they have to go and pick up couches and TV. We've got to start finding them, and we've got to do better than what we're doing. This is unbelievable. It's a joke. It's really a joke. We're not teaching the public anything. We're saying, don't worry, we'll take care of it, we'll pick it up, and we'll bring it to the dump for you. This is not the way you should be. This is the way I wasn't brought up. I pick up my own trash. I mean, really, I don't mind picking up papers, but when I'm walking up in a basement with a couch and another guy, I mean, a mattress, and the thing is wet, there's something wrong with this picture. A guy 60-something years old picking up a couch, and I got an 18-year-old kid in bed, there's something wrong with this picture. Really. And if I'm angry, I am angry. It's unbelievable. And it's not a life and matter. I mean, we look like a bunch of fools. You go to our communities, and it's not like that. And we're not solving the problem. All right, thank you. And again, I'm sorry, I want to say thank you to everybody in Ward 2.
Council Clark.
Thank you, Mr. President. I wanted to just make the councilors know about a couple of events that went on last Friday. The Special Olympics was held at Pittsburgh State University. If you haven't been to one of these events, you should really go. It's a very special time. And they had hundreds and hundreds of people. It was a wonderful effort put on by those people that were in charge, and the participants themselves. And a couple of hours later, we had a naturalization ceremony in which there were about 100 new Americans sworn in that day, and with all their parents, and there were well over 600 people there. Again, another really special ceremony, very special, how appreciative these people